All right, good morning, everyone. Over to you, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the month of December for the Washington County Board of Commissioners. We are here in our work session on Tuesday, December 3rd. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. I'm joined by Vice Chair Commissioner Nafisa Fai, Commissioners Pam Trees, and Commissioner Jerry Willey. Today is a busy day after our work session meeting. Well, following an hour of our work session meeting, we have our Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, starting at 10:00, followed by our Board of Commissioners' business meeting. And then we will be reconvening our work session at 1:00 with a few items on the agenda then. Does anyone have any questions on the formal agenda for either of the meetings, the Housing Authority, or the Board of Commissioners? Okay, do we have someone lined up to read the proclamation for yesterday's World AIDS Day? Great. Okay, and then we have two presentations. One with the Utility of the Future Award, I assume, will have a picture. Yes. Okay. Okay. Great. Seeing no questions, we'll get going then. And first up is Erin Calvert with the Public Safety Coordinating Council, Applications and Appointment Process. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm here to talk with you today about the slate of candidates for the Public Safety Coordinating Council, or PSCC, and the PSCC's recommendation for appointments by your board to serve the term of January 1st, 2025, through December 31st of 2026. The PSCC has three terms pending on December 31st of this year. Two current members decided not to reapply, and we're grateful to both Todd Schaefer and Susan Fazdina for their service over the last four and two years, respectively. The PSCC received three applications during the open recruitment period of September 17th through October 29th of this year. And the PSCC set up an interview subcommittee to do meet-and-greet-style interviews, which were held virtually on November 4th. And then at the November 15th PSCC meeting, the interview committee made the recommendation to fill two of the open terms with the reappointment of Rachel Schutz, who currently chairs the PSCC, and the appointment of Alan Perincini. There was a third candidate who's not being recommended for appointment at this time just simply because her preference was to be appointed to the Behavioral Health Council. The PSCC member matrix and candidate profiles are in your packet, and I'll highlight the committee recommendations as follows. For Rachel Schutz, she's applying for a second term on the Public Safety Coordinating Council. She served as chair during her first term and helped lead improvements to the structure and the work of the PSCC. Rachel's interested in continuing the work in the public safety and would like to help bridge the gap between public safety and public health. She brings critical insight and several perspectives to the PSCC as a lay community member, as the Executive Director of the Family Justice Center, and as a foster parent whose child's family has lived experience in the criminal justice system. Rachel is a resident of District 4, and she identifies as female and white and Latina. Alan Perincini, his career includes 30 years of journalism and 20 years in public relations, including work with the criminal justice system, the ACLU, and the LA Times. As a reporter and during court activities, he had to keep a distance from being involved, but it piqued his curiosity. He sees his participation on the PSCC as an opportunity to leverage his experience. Alan did his research and homework to understand what the PSCC does and what it's working on. He's interested in participating, putting in the work, and looking at different perspectives to develop collaborative relationships and accomplish the PSCC's goals. Alan is a resident of District 3, and he identifies as male and white. So at this time, the PSCC is recommending and requesting that your board consider the appointment of Rachel Schutz and Alan Perincini to the PSCC for the term of January 1st, 2025, through December 31st of 2026, and that you direct staff to adjourn this request to your board's business meeting on December 17th for formal appointment. And then it's further recommended that the PSCC leave one position vacant and continue to work on recruitment through your board's next open recruitment period in January, and possibly focus on recruiting a member of our community with lived experience that may bring a lens or perspective as a victim or survivors, which is supported in our bylaws. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
First, I want to note that Commissioner Rogers has joined us as well. So Commissioners, do you have any questions on the recommendations for appointment?
Erin, I don't have any concerns or questions regarding the candidates. I did have a question around the bylaws, and when was it was last updated?
Yes, your board adopted the update. And this is like the one document I didn't print out, but I believe it was July of this year. But I'll get back to you on that. It was pretty recently. As we cleaned up some of the language and we added the membership, wanting to have more of a victim lens as members.
And then, because that date isn't printed on the bylaws that are attached to the documents, materials.
Okay. I'll double-check. There might be a teeny tiny space at the bottom, but I'll double-check that, too.
Because I, one thing that caught my attention in, I'd be overthinking this, but it was the terminology around lay community member. And if there's been a division or friction between the members around, like, terming lay community member versus everybody else, it's pretty professionally oriented.
Oh, I see. Yeah, I believe, but I can check that I think that's standard naming for our boards and commissions, but I'll check on that.
Also, the council bylaws, the foundation of the PSCC bylaws. Perhaps, since Commissioner Fai won't look at me, perhaps you can share with her the origin of the PSCC bylaws and the ORS.
Yeah, absolutely.
The bylaws are included in the documents. The materials that were published this morning for this work session. And I did review them. It is included, obviously, which is why I'm calling it out. But the thing is, lay community member is outdated. So I don't know.
Yeah, and I think that was a change, Commissioner Fai, from our use of citizen, the old terminology. And we went to community member, and then, but the lay community member, I can double-check to make sure that's standard of board and commission language.
Yeah, just something to flag for future. If this bylaw was to come to the board to flag it, maybe just consider getting rid of the lay versus community members. But I, it just, just a material review.
So Ms. Calvert, the point I wanted to make is that the base structure for PSCC are the two ORSs that are cited. It is a state-level council that we then have the opportunity to expand the membership of.
Correct. Yeah, and by statute, there is one community member required, and that your board has added four additional community members, among other folks on the council.
All on board.
So is the commission ready to take action on those later this month? Okay, great, thank you. Next, we'll move on to board and leadership communication. Why don't we do leadership communication first? Ms. Edwards, why don't you start us off?
Thank you so much, Chair and Clean Water Services Board of Directors. Keep my comments short today. Very excited that during the board meeting later today, you will be hearing from Lisa Huntington, our Director of Natural Systems Enhancement and Stewardship, who will be presenting on our Utility of the Future Award that we received at WEF Tech back in October. I don't want to steal Lisa's thunder, but we're very excited. She's bringing members of her team. And it's, the award was in recognition of the work that we've done around watershed stewardship. So very excited to celebrate with you all. And then the only other item is just to remind folks that December 7th, this weekend, is the last weekend that we are offering our leaf drop. So if you still have leaves that are around catch basins or any drainage, please get those up, and you can bring them to our field operations location on December 7th, and we'll take care of them for you. That's all.
Wonderful.
Yeah, so I will keep my comments brief today as well. And good morning, Chair and Board of Commissioners. Our Elections Division and Assessment and Taxation completed all of their ballot counting work yesterday for the 2024 general election. Voter turnout for the November 5th, 2024, general election for Washington County was 75% with 301,105 ballots tabulated. This number includes ballots that were dropped off at an official ballot collection site as well as those that were postmarked by Election Day and received no later than the seven days after the election. Our turnout this year was lower than the 84% during the 2020 general election and lower than the 80% turnout in the 2016 general election. We're grateful for our elections workers and all the cooperating agencies who supported their important work, including our own departments such as ITS, Facility Fleets, Parks, LUT, and the Sheriff's Office, and making sure that this was a successful elections process. And that concludes my update.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. I just wanted to highlight that the North Plains UBG expansion litigation goes on. We received notice last week that the city is appealing the Judge Irwin's decision up to the Court of Appeals. We actually haven't seen the petition yet, so we don't know exactly what the issues are, but suspect that the city is challenging Judge Irwin's conclusion that the city could not legally recall the referendum election on the expansion ordinance. So we'll see. When we get it, we'll give it a good review and give you an update. The county is not participating in the appeal, and we're not named in the appeal, of course. We weren't named, you'll recall, Mr. Forster was named simply in his role as election manager. But we will monitor it and be watching it and keeping you updated on how it goes. And that is it for me?
Maybe.
Let's make a comment.
Sure.
Read your, yeah, Friday's information. And you noted in there that there could be attorney's fees that could be paid by the city if they lose that appeal. I thought it was interesting as well, is if they win the appeal and that is overturned, they've got a complete new city council staff from people who opposed this anyway. And I just can't see them moving ahead, even if the judge allows them to go ahead. So it's an interesting step the city's taking at this.
That's exactly what I said to Mr. Bovette. I said, "This is going to be interesting to watch and see what happens." And in addition to what you're talking about, but also the legal issues, you know, are quite interesting to those of us who, you know, practice law. So it'll be interesting to watch.
Thank you.
Sure. Communication. I can go first. Great. So, welcome back to Maida and from her vacation. And thank you to Brenda for her help while she was gone. I just want to express my appreciation there. Last week, I was out for a few days, but I did have a chance to check in with Deputy, Chief Deputy Al Roque, and also had a chance to attend the Sheriff's Office Employee Recognition Event where the chair spoke. And at the end of the week, I just want to let you know that I was a guest presenter in my grandson's classroom in Montclair, New Jersey. And the purpose of this was to talk about what commissioners do. And what I did, you were all present with me because they had a web projector, so I could pull up our website and talk from there. So they asked who each of the people were, and now you are all well-known in Montclair, New Jersey. They're some great population. But it was a lot of fun. Last night was the last meeting of ACRE for the year. We had a really good turnout, and my co-chair, Lillian, asked if everybody would talk about their holiday traditions. And it was really interesting to hear. We have such a culturally diverse group. It was interesting to hear different types of traditions. It was good. We also got an update from GR on our legislative update. We had a presentation on the CPO, CII Modernization Plan. And they announced that the Domination Committee for ACRE has two candidates that will be coming to us for approval in January. So also, tonight, I am going to be attending the Legislative Wine Caucus event. So there you go. It's going to be held in my district at Amatera Winery, so I was invited to attend that. I'm looking forward to it. Tomorrow, I have a check-in with our county auditor, followed by the Impact Coordinating Committee meeting. This will be my second-to-last chairing that coordinating committee. So I do this meeting for December and then set the stage for January. I'm also looking forward to the Washington County State Legislative Breakfast on Thursday morning. Thank you to Erin Carley and Grace for getting that organized. I know it's a lot of work. And then after our roundtable on Thursday, I'm also planning on dropping into the WIC event hosted by the Oregon Coalition of Local Health Officials and the Tri-County Public Health Departments. WIC is such a valuable resource to so many of our residents. I want to make sure I'm there to support it and to support the request to the state legislature. Then on Monday, I will be attending the Oregon Leadership Summit. So with that, that's my report. Great. Anybody else? Looks like it wasn't sunny.
It wasn't. It was cloudy every day, cold, rained. No, it was very nice. Thanks, Roy. 14 days of sunshine and 85. Yeah, it was good. Good to get away. After I'm looking at what I did while I was away, I'm not sure that was good, but.
Personal joy.
And that's the truth. So since we last met, which for me would be the 14th, I attended the Regional Housing Funding Engagement Table Meeting Number One with Catherine. I attended that one in person with everybody else. Then later, actually, when I was on vacation, I attended the second meeting on Zoom. And it's always good. I had two Zoom meetings while I was there. It's always good because I do it on the patio, and it overlooks the pool and the green space behind us, which is all sunny. So I do that intentionally to let everybody know. But anyway, those have been good meetings.
For real.
And we'll be down there. The chair and I will be down there as well. Also attended the PSCC meeting, which we reappointed Rachel Schutz today. But she put on a presentation on ACRES, and ACRES stands for Adverse Childhood Experiences. ACE, I mean, ACE, yeah, not acres, that's U. And it was really good. She put about an hour, the presentation was very informative, and I think she's going to send out the information to the group. I'd have to look at Erin. I haven't seen that yet, but excellent information that she presented there. In our meeting, our last meeting with COLPAC, we talked about FEMA Pickham. And that was a very robust conversation, as you can imagine. That has a significant impact on the community of Telemack and certainly the coastal communities. So this is a very hot topic with them. We had Senator Wyden and Representative Bonamici's staff in the meeting as well, and they will continue to push ahead. They talked about Governor's Letter as well as the response to the Governor's Letter. So stay tuned for where that goes. Let's see, had. This week is a pretty good week. I had Region 1 Act last night. We talked about, I know that there are three workgroups currently going on. Back to Basics is one, Public Transportation and Transit is two, and House Bill 2017, Finish What We Started. So got a little bit of an update from staff on those three workgroups as well as a good presentation primarily from ODOT. And one was on, of course, electric vehicles and the charging program that ODOT is working on. And that was a really robust conversation as well. So I certainly enjoyed that. And then later this week, I am going to that Monday event as well, next Monday. So that'll be good. Look forward to that. That's always kind of the high point. Got lots of people that attend that, and you get more done in the hall than you do inside listening. But yeah, so there's plenty of other things going on this week that I will be attending. Yeah, and I understand Maida says we're moving. Don't come in on Monday. Is that what I'm told?
Yeah, yeah.
So stay home and work, unless you want to, you know, move some furniture or something. I don't know what they're doing.
Board, if I can clarify, the board offices aren't moving. So board members are very welcome to come in. Just know there may be some disruption and people moving around in the office, but we like excitement here at Washington County. So feel free to come join the fun.
Well, I thought they were, you know, moving their offices to the basement or something. Anyway.
Yours is on the roof.
Mine's on the roof. Thank you.
The chair stepped out, so I'm with the gavel. So Commissioner Rogers is just meeting you. Who wants to go next? You want me to go, or you want, mine is really.
You're the chair. What do you want to do?
Well, mine, I'll go next and say, mine is really quick. I've been on vacation last week, so I don't really have a board-worthy of information discussion right now, other than to say I'm going to a lot of the events, a lot of stuff on my calendar. So that's my update.
It was fast, yeah. Some of you went to a little different meeting. I was at the WA State of the West Side. It was an interesting meeting. Both, it was nice. Both Steve Callaway and I were, said goodbye, and Nafisa was there. And nice to see a few people and say goodbye to them as well as we depart our respective activities. On Friday, or some of you were at the Housing Authority. I was at the HB 217 Transit Advisory Committee. And this is one you're going to really want to pay attention to because it's on a two-year cycle. And so whoever gets reassigned that committee, we did all the work. So next year is a real freebie. And so if you divide up in January, committee assignments, House Bill 2017 Transit Committee for '25 is pretty nice. We also, I also attended a nice event at CPO 4K where, he will disagree with me, but Jason was kind of the highlight. They invited both of us. He was an introduction to Jason, where he could say remarks, and they certainly wanted to hear about him more. And they wanted to say goodbye to me, and that was nice. Had a nice cake and all that sort of thing. So it was, that was enjoyable. Normal stuff after that, and so I will pass it to the real chair.
All right, thank you. Yeah, as mentioned, a week ago Friday was the Annual Housing Forum. Kudos to our staff for lining up two really interesting panels. Learned a bit from the Behavioral Health Panel, and then the second panel on Preservation. So it was really quite interesting. As Commissioner Willie mentioned, the first two of four Metro Housing and Homelessness engagement meetings are done. Meeting three is later this afternoon. So as a result, I will be staging myself in Beaverton for our work session at 1:00. So I've got a faster drive down to Metro. So Vice Chair Fai will run the afternoon meeting, and then by 3:00, I will be exiting the meeting. So sorry to depart early. Yesterday was the first of two SHS Oversight Committee meetings in December. Usually, there's only one per month, but this time of year, they're trying to get the regional annual report done. They did a really nice job with some staff support to pull together the results from all three county annual reports and the presentations and recognize highlights. So if you have a chance, check out the packet from yesterday's meeting. In addition, they had a staff member come in and give a highlight of where the Metro Council stands. Well, I shouldn't say the word stand. The continued work of the Metro Council on the housing and homelessness funding effort. Because the council had a really interesting work session on Tuesday that I'll come back to. But so a staff member, sorry, I don't remember her name, presented, and then turned it over to Brian Kennedy, who presented what the council work session had gone over on Tuesday of last week. The Oversight Committee was quite pointed, I'll say, in providing dismay over this effort and how the summaries keep saying that they've been engaged, but they don't feel that they've been engaged and asked. So what kind of improvements would oversight mean? So they're contemplating writing a letter, coming back to that topic. So there is another meeting next Monday for them to do further work on the annual report because the writer, the technical writer, will have a new or draft version for them. And they're pulling together of some regional advice. In addition, next Monday, and this is a meeting that, if you have a chance to tune into next Monday, it will be about the new forecast, which will be quite different, as I understand it, from previous forecasts. So as you may recall, there was the November 2023 forecast, but that was, but then, as the year transpired, revenue collection was lower than forecast by about 6%, which was 20, I think, if I remember it right, about $21 million. There. Which was quite a change because previously, this was a new tax, so collections were high. But now they've done further examination based upon that experience. We can somewhat see it in the annual charts that was in the packet on Monday. And so I'm anticipating, but that is the meeting where it's going to be presented publicly. The one and only, apparently. So I've been informed that the Metro Council will receive a memo from the Metro staff and the forecasters either on Wednesday or Thursday. And that's all I got for you. On that, so meeting, at meeting two, the Council President Peterson had asked that each of the counties come in to respond to the 250 and the 225 level of funding, which for this year means $260 million. Okay? But it's taking, anyway, you're following me. So we had gotten all that information from our work session, and so our staff presented what is either paused until further clarity. And so our staff presented what, what is either paused until further clarity or where we have to let some purchase and sale agreements just expire. Multnomah County also presented, uh, I think there's a slight difference in terms of the clarity of impact, but similar impact. And based upon various conversations I'm hearing, as well as what counselors were saying at their work session last week, the people are starting to internalize that this is in fact taking us back. I was dismayed, the, didn't I, who, did I not send you an email on the work session? I know I sent it to staff. Okay. So, sorry. The Metro Council Work Session of last Tuesday. Check out the slides. It went two and a quarter hours. I watched the whole video and then re, kept re-watching certain segments to make sure I understood what was discussed and where the direction went. They have some new scenarios. And I think we're going to continue to see more new scenarios. I'm hoping that as counselors have the opportunity to review our information, I'm hoping that their statements, uh, there were statements made that's, in my opinion, seemed to criticize us for responding to the question of what does this level of funding impact? You'll have to listen to it yourself, uh, because I think we continue to try and do an honest evaluation of what they've got. So, um, let me be very clear because Metro's being very clear in there. I think they're doing a good job in their clarity. This, the scenarios are not a forecast. The scenarios are what might be possible at different funding levels. So, um, I'll go back and check my emails to see, uh, what we've had at our work session and sync up with our staff to see, um, the latest information. Sorry, it has been evolving. The Metro Council, there was the Metro Council Work Session, and then there was what was said at the Oversight Committee Meeting yesterday. As of yesterday afternoon, the council is now saying that they're just going to provide some, some direction to their staff, uh, on their, their resolution package. And then do a referral in January, which, so we're back to that timeline. So, uh, we'll see. So it's going to be an interesting couple of weeks. So, um, Council President Peterson sent out another email, laying out some statements and I will forward that to you today, um, in case I haven't already. Because it was startling. She sent it out late yesterday and I had other meetings. So I got it to staff right away and then synced up with the tri-county chairs. And for me, it took my breath away.
Can I make a comment or two on most meetings? Because I, first of all, I think, um, kudos to our staff, Molly and Erin, that made the presentation to, uh, this committee. I believe that there were several people on the committee that were not aware of how successful and how well-run our, um, our program has been. Uh, it opened some eyes, I believe, as to what the impact of where we're going with this. And I just want to say kudos to them because they did a great job. I think that, um, uh, yes, I read, um, President Peterson's, uh, email yesterday. I think we have a, I think we, we have a lot of work to do, but also I believe they are starting to see some of the impact of what they might be proposing might be certainly detrimental. So we continue to move ahead. As the chair said, uh, I have asked for information regarding how much money is paid by, uh, personal tax returns and how much is paid by business tax returns. I got that information yesterday. Forty-five percent of it's business, fifty-five percent of it's personal roughly. And then I asked the question of, because they want to initially reduce it by ten percent. So I ask what does each five percent equal in tax reduction? It's nine point five million dollars. And the reason why I'm asking these questions is because I firmly believe that, uh, we need to build this program from the bottom up and then see what, what it would cost to do that. And, um, I have submitted that information to a couple of, to our staff as well as, uh, President Peterson. And, um, um, got no response from it. But again, that's, that's just the numbers side of me. I think we did need to be looking at what the program should be looking at if she wants to revise it. What, what funding would be necessary to do it at whatever level? So, and it's interesting too, uh, it is not a cap according to the letter, the email yesterday. It's floor, it's a floor. Now, um, that's an interesting.
What is it?
Change in terminology.
In the scenarios, you're saying?
Yeah, yesterday she said it's not cap.
She actually contradicts herself.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and so I'm, I've tried, tried to process the difference in a floor and a cap. So still working on, on that. But, um, and then of course they have been saying that there's going to be a three percent inflation added to it. And my response back to that is, um, that's not sufficient. That's how the county got upside down is by an eight percent inflation rate and a three percent tax rate. We're going to put ourselves in the same condition if they put a three percent, uh, inflation index to it. And we know that over the next twenty-plus years, we're going to have times when inflation is going to be more than three percent. So anyway, lots of work to still be done on that. I, I have to believe they're paying attention. And the letter that we got also, uh, last week, uh, was very good.
The letter we got?
Yeah.
Sipa?
Yeah.
Oh.
I thought she, she did a very good job writing letters. Anyway, that's my two bits worth on that.
May I ask a question of the chair? I think what I heard you say is that, um, you thought that the messages from Washington County were being heard by Metro Council. You're.
I didn't say specifically Metro Council.
Okay. Okay. All the sleep.
Thanks for that clarification. That's what I thought.
Being heard. So, but, and the reason.
Well, I, I can't say it's been heard by the whole council.
I know. I, and I guess what I'm asking is.
We discussed it in a public meeting.
Yeah.
So it's getting out there.
Yeah. And, and I, I, but at the same time, it seems like the train is still moving forward.
Very much.
And the train is getting to its first station in January.
Well, they're, they're going to be setting further direction in December. But they're putting off, uh, a specific referral to at least January. Cause there was a point by which they were planning on taking action on the resolution in December and possibly the referral in December.
Right.
Can I ask a question while we stay at that? Sorry Pam, just what's the drop dead date for getting the referral?
For May?
For May?
It's usually in March.
The other point I'd like, uh, to raise and Commissioner Willie raised this with me. And that is that the discussion has been about a tax reduction. But when you.
For personal income tax only, not for the business income tax.
Okay. But when you look at the extension of the program over the course of thirty years versus ten.
Two tax rates.
It's, but my, my point is, is that a reduction if you're going longer? And that's what, that's the question you had raised. I think it's an interesting discussion.
Well, the referral was never about a set amount like a bond.
Okay.
It was always about a rate.
Yeah. And, but my point is I can acknowledge the tax, tax, tax reduction when you're extending the tax twenty years. That doesn't work.
Because it's a reduction in the tax.
The reduction in the rate, but it's an extension of the tax. So I don't know.
It's, it's, it's interesting, just the semantics around that issue is interesting. Thank you.
It's a journey.
Just want to make sure we have the right ticket for that train.
I don't know that it's just one train.
No. I want my, my transfers to be correct as well.
Yeah. So, so I think that's it for now. Everybody go? Yep. Okay, great. Well then, uh, we'll convene at ten AM for the Housing Authority Board of Directors. And we'll pause this work session to reconvene at one o'clock. Thank you.